And that's what I know with me, he keeps answering so many calls solo. Because it's just not, and most of his are medical calls, so most are. If it's a fire call, everybody's there, right? People with medical calls, it's very unlikely. And he's still in his team, I don't know if one other, so it's. I'm like, I don't want you going through there and around.
So we got a full house here.
I don't think they could.
What?
Post through the meeting's meeting right now, like, crazy to know.
Oh my God. Standing room only at this point. Lot of people coming in for the meeting tonight, awesome turnout.
I was like, wow, he's like, you know, he's army. I'm like, she didn't even know you were here. And he's president's really, he gets me out of. Are you sure? Army, you're part of the army? He was, well, he wasn't captain, I think he was a ranger, he was actually in. He was in one of the advanced jumps, but he's actually not, not that that ended. Well, I think. I carried somebody. I didn't remember who it was, a hard break. I don't think he even carried out of the army. I carried him down with me, he was regular. Almost like we're trying to get trapped. They don't want to know too much. She's. It is so funny how many in our community have heard of everybody's.
Some form, some form with their spouse.
We have a whole bunch of. So like those two things. There's a margin for like, there he has to make. Yeah, when there is one single person. It's like there are always. I mean, they don't, everybody's.
Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To their honor, which stands one nation under God, indivisible.
Mr. Burton?
Here.
Ms. Adams?
Here.
Mr. Braha?
Here.
Ms. Gelman?
Here.
Mr. Romero?
Here.
Mr. Thorne?
Here.
Mr. May.
Approval of the agenda, we've got some changes. Under reports. We're gonna have to be added, we're gonna talk about the audits. And then in the. The next set down below that discussion of board of trustee behavior and code enforcement. We're not gonna talk about that tonight.
Why not?
Who asked that?
I did. Why not?
We're not talking about it tonight, uh, I asked to have them removed because they've really, nothing to do with. That we discussed tonight. It'll come back up.
I need a motion.
Make a motion to amend the agenda. Do add audits under nine as a D and remove. Board of trustees behavior, code enforcement, and law enforcement.
Mr. Burton?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Brahas?
Yes.
Ms. Gelman?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Um, I got a couple of things that I wanted to bring up. It's all right, old. We have been pushed to turning the agenda items by last Thursday. And you posted an agenda. On the twenty second. And then all of a sudden on the twenty fourth, there's a new agenda.
I got a room now.
Who was the one who submitted the changes? The attorney position in six and seven.
Um, I was asked to add executive session.
By whom?
Don.
Does he have any authority to change the agenda?
And the attorney asking to add discussion.
Okay. Yes. You said yes. Mr. Thorne?
Yes.
Here.
I can't hear. Can we speak a little bit clearer, a little bit louder, please? I can't hear all the way back here.
Thank you.
And that one, I'm a lawyer, please, I can't hear, sir.
You can't hear, Mr.. They're having a little bit of trouble hearing you as well, but I have everything as high up on here as I can go.
Yeah, um, I can hear you pretty well, Sarah.
They can hear Sarah pretty well, so if everybody can maybe try to talk a little louder, so you can hear.
Investor. Um, the rule of the regular meeting minutes per June twenty seven, two thousand twenty four. Motion when you're ready.
Motion to approve the minutes is.
Second.
Mr. Burton?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Brahas?
Yes.
Ms. Gelman?
Yeah.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Thorne?
Yes.
Before we get into the next item. Would I ask, let me question. How can the minutes from the July seventeenth meeting?
Next item discussion regarding attorney position.
Mr. Buckner, that's supposed to be on Zoom.
So he's in the show too? I can stand out and try to call him if he's more, if maybe he's having an issue, make sure he's off his leaf and everything.
I'm gonna figure one of your executive sessions.
Buckner wasn't on the Zoom.
Not to allow the executive session now, before.
I'll see if he'll miss. Stephanie is checking into attorney. Do you want to?
Shouldn't take very long, though.
That out, that's exactly what I'm here to talk about. Um, in the audits. Tyra and Mare's behavior.
That was more interesting than.
Gotcha. And they just removed the C and D? Oh, the C and D.
Somebody up there, they're on air.
Yeah, I shouldn't hear, so I wasn't sure about this. I'm so dead. He's giving it all out, he did it with the lights.
On the augmentation.
Shaw, you were gonna make a motion to knock every one of these out of the session.
Was the, uh, was the audit, uh, was moved again, so you can talk first.
I'm sorry, Stephanie, what'd you say about the attorney? Oh, he didn't go in so tight, so he said he's gonna walk in now. Ah, you don't seem quite there. There he is. You there, Mr. Buckner? How much is he paying? Can you see everybody? I'd just like to go on record saying I object to Mr. Buckner being in any of our meetings. Can you hear us?
He's on the agenda board.
Are you there, okay? Do we get to find out how much he's been paid? I know how much he's paid. Is that, you do, okay.
Yeah, truly good start, man.
That was something we could never get, thank you. You should be here in person.
We'd like to start the discussion.
Put it on here.
So they're on number six, the discussion of the attorney position.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So I prepared a letter to read to the board tonight. Dear Board of Trustees. This is regret that this is, I say my formal resignation while I have had a great. Unfounded accusations from certain members of the board, which give me no choice but to resign my position as an attorney. The tone in plain language about the trustees' statements may clear that I will not be a respected or welcome member of the town staff moving forward. The trustee's tone is unnecessarily confrontational, dupertorial, and exceeds any executive authority. The trustee's statements presupposes. The plain language of these accusations casts unherited dispersions on my legal ethics and professionalism in its tantamount to a unilateral termination, as no self-respecting professional can continue to work in such an accusatory and hostile environment. The statements made erroneously assume and allege many forms of misconduct, which I will not dignify with response or defense. Going forward, please be advised that no trustee has the unilateral power to reprimand and/or terminate an officer of the town. The town of Aguilar operates under a weak-knit system of government, where actions such as these accusations towards me and other staff are, are subject to approval by the majority of the governing body. In addition to these unfounded accusations, I have reviewed the previous DOT meeting and noticed many violations of the Colorado Opens Meeting Law that I have previously advised against. Regardless of any issues between town staff and the board, no staff member deserves being treated as the Aguilar staff have been by the community and by their own trustees. And unless rectified, the board has shown they clearly don't deserve the staff's selfless service to this community. Further, the recent action removing an officer without notice is a clear violation of the COML, as the board may not take formal action removing any officer without properly noticing the same and unveiling the officer of an option for a public hearing. Sadly, all of this was preventable, as I was prepared to continue proudly representing the town of Aguilar, remaining loyal to the town's mission, vision, and goals. This board needs to take a hard look at certain trustees' actions towards staff, treatment of employees and contractors, and what those actions represent regarding the future of your local governing body. It is these types of rogue actions that will create future liability for the town by promoting slander and defamation, unlawful termination, and Colorado Opens Meeting Law violation of type lawsuits. Regardless of this board's trajectory, I will not lower my standards of integrity and respect for others by continuing to serve under trustees that show none. I stand by the work I have completed with on behalf of Aguilar. It is with great displeasure and sadness that I am unable to continue to support the town of Aguilar's current board. I hope certain remaining trustees have the courage to ensure their voice is heard and make their vote count by opposing disrespectful, autocratic, and vulgar behavior and by doing what is best for Aguilar, using truth and reason. Finally, I am going forward to see the following treating town officers or anyone the way that I and others have been treated. Aguilar is better and deserves better than this. Please believe I have truly no ill intentions in tendering this resignation, as is my practice. My sole intent is to be candid and direct in my communication and advice with, and advice with the DOT. And I do wish you all a Godspeed. Jack, man, me.
My second. Thank you, Mr. Buckner. I appreciate all your help.
Thank you all, if you guys need help in the future with a different, um, makeup of the board, I'm like.
I'm not doing any work.
Did he really just threaten to sue the town if we progress with anything towards Tyra and Mare, who have both done things to me and my husband? Thank you. Truth, you want truth?
Well, he plays victim very well, you see where Tyra got it.
Can I ask a question? Did he resign because he is her, um, private attorney? Or? Or because he's under investigation now as well? Or just because he knows he's not?
I don't know the answer, I don't think anybody knows the answer to that question. Um, I just, you know, I did look at what we paid him. We paid him a total of seven thousand dollars over the last year.
It's like to undermine the rights.
Yeah, to, to harass citizens.
And what was accomplished?
I don't know, I didn't see the invoices, I just got the total checks. So, um, you know, I'm sure to attend meetings, to write up any new ordinances that happened over the last year. You know, that's.
I would certainly ask for anything, any documents that it has.
Yes. Yes. Yeah, to return the documents. Exactly.
Okay, we're gonna move on. Like going to executive session under CRS section twenty four dash six.
Mr. Buckner, this is CFT construction, we have a, we have a problem with the trustees before you go into executive session.
I'm sorry.
CFT construction, we would like to speak publicly to the trustees before you go into executive session. Is that, is that possible, is that allowed, they give it?
Possible, yes, when we.
It's kind of important.
It pertains to it, I think that would be important to hear for.
Pertain to what?
You owe me seven hundred thousand dollars, that's pretty sick.
Oh, my goodness. We'd all like to hear what he has to say, wouldn't you, Vernon? Well, we know he hasn't been paid. Seven hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money.
Posco motion, like, Vernon, and I, we just want the trustees to know where we stand, what's gonna take place on Monday.
Okay.
I hear now. Sir, could you please stand and let us know? I gotta ask if I.
I don't know why we're going into executive session on, under this anyway, I believe in, you know, transparency needs to be happening anyway on all of this.
Considering the past, I think transparency is good. Sunshine on everything. Thank you, sir.
Is there another attorney on here?
No, he's gone.
That's an attorney, isn't it? He's your attorney, right? Right?
What was your name?
A master. Yes.
And you're the, you're the contractor?
That's correct.
Okay.
You didn't know that? See, I tell you, you owe us seven hundred thousand dollars for months.
I've been on for three weeks.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're new. Well, guess what? So unfortunately, we were, we're sympathetic with your issues, we kind of followed along with some of the things, I don't know what's fact fiction or what. However, you know, we entered into a contract late with you guys, had trouble getting this under contract, pushed us into the winter. Uh, we, we experienced additional expenses, we never asked for those additional expenses. We end up doing half again more earthwork than we were supposed to do. We delivered the project on a weekly basis, your water attorney, weekly, stressed the requirement that you guys were able to take on water. We finished the project, it's my understanding your engineering firm quit the last week of construction, or what, I don't know exactly what you call quit or resigned. So for that, I don't, I don't know what the trustees know. Uh, Mr. McDaniel's has been direct correspondent with my counsel. We had a budget meeting day before yesterday in my office, our year end is coming up. We've budgeted a large amount of money. We are gonna sue the town of Aguilar, SGM, Tyra, Ken Torres, and that's gonna happen Monday afternoon. So we've given everybody every opportunity to get us paid. This is a significant amount of money. And a lot of this work was done in February. And here it is, late July, and I've not been paid. I, my patience is running thin. I've kind of looked the other way here, but I'm at, I'm kind of, I'm at the end, we're gonna have to take.
I, I didn't hear your name.
A Baxter Kirkland. Yeah, my, my father built the sewage plant with the plaque on the wall, and they're actually, I painted the damn building, but it's a little. I am, you know, we're pretty close community here. And I'm very upset that I'm being treated this way.
We are too.
Well, meanwhile, you got attorneys and consultants to get paid to sit here and drag this out. Uh, I don't know about the money situation, I don't know why you can't pay us. Well, my understanding is you're under a best federal investigation now, is what our understanding is. So we just want to bring it to your attention, that's what's gonna happen. And unfortunately, the seven hundred is gonna be a lot bigger number when this is over. So.
What's your numbers?
Seven hundred.
Well, you owe us seven hundred and some thousand right now. By the time we go through the courts, might, might as well just double it. You're gonna lose. You're under contract.
Okay, so I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the meat statement, so on May third, I see a payment going out of six hundred eighty two thousand to CFT. Did you receive that?
I don't know. Probably, probably if it says it went out, you owe us, in addition to that, you owe seven million, seven hundred thousand. Because, yeah, that's another thing, you guys budgeted six million dollars for this project, I built it for three million and eighteen thousand. You have a grant and a loan for six million dollars, and I built it for three million and eighteen thousand bucks.
Is that a?
There's three millions left on it?
So that's enough, Seth, we're gonna.
And then I see another payment going out of seven hundred fifty eight thousand on April tenth.
Probably, but you're only paid up to about two million, two million and something, you owe, you owe seven hundred thousand dollars.
I'm just trying to confirm that you received.
Well, I wouldn't know that month to month payments, man, I have lots of projects. I know where you stand right now, you owe us seven hundred and some thousand dollars. Your attorney has agreed that you owed it? We have it on record from your attorney, in writing.
I'm just.
We have it on record from the engineering firm that we. Well, I'm sorry, you've only been here three weeks, I'm. We have from your counsel, from your engineer that we completed the job, accolades that we did a great job, and that you owe the money, but I'm in pain.
No, well, I mean, obviously, we owe you money, we owe you money, we're just, I'm just trying to, like I said.
Well, maybe you can get that, maybe you can get that in executive session, thank you, Ellen.
Thank you. Sorry.
Now, there's no way the three millions go on.
I'm sorry. Why can't millions just fall in the money? Just give us the millions, just. Uh, this is bad because that's not the only lawsuit that is probably sort of tearing Tyra out. And there's more comments. I'd wait till the law.
So you should be not.
The CFA.
I was saying that our town attorney just quit.
Our town attorney just quit, and this is supposed to be a discussion over contracts, and we don't have an attorney representing us. So why don't we, uh, put this off until we have someone who's gonna represent us?
Is that could be forever? Why don't we ask the water attorney?
Is that your water attorney's there?
He's on, he's only, uh, doing one side of it.
Not the attorneys, but the attorney on the town's game or lawsuit, you guys can't. It becomes a conflict of interest.
Well, if we're gonna do an executive, somebody call it, let's keep this going.
A lot of us, a lot of the, even the board members, we don't have much of.
Here we are, sorry.
I make it on record.
We'd also ask for a monthly report on the augmentation pond to keep us up to date, and with all the turmoil, it looks like we didn't get that. So what are we gonna do in the executive session?
Well, I think we have some issues we do want to talk about with the water attorney. And it should take longer than, I think, that's going to do the executive session.
This guy was, he was the manager of the CFA?
He was the president.
The president of the CFA? And the owners come.
Yeah, that's what I, you know, questioned, it's not like he hasn't been paid at all, I mean, obviously, we still owe them a lot of money, but, you know, we couldn't even, you know, confirm that we've received, you know, over one point. you know, confirm that we've received, you know, over one point three million on the two payments I saw, so.
That was the thing he said, though, was that, look, this is how much was, he, he said the numbers. He said the five, the six million, he did it for three point, three million, one point eight K, whatever the hell it was, and then stated that the balance due to them has still not been paid. And that's the problem is that he's been waiting months and months and months for that last, you know.
I understand. I'd be.
He's not, he's not disputing some of it. He may just disputing.
We may, I mean, you guys have seen what I've seen in the last two weeks.
I've seen it. You've seen a lot. That's why we wanted you.
The money goes through, uh, we don't get it all at one time. It goes through a process of approval.
Right.
On completion of things. And I, I'm sure you've seen those emails online.
Yeah.
Okay, I was intending a motion to enter.
I'll second it. Let's just keep going.
She said.
Behind closed doors.
Okay, great. Second session, it's a CRAS section. Two four dash six dash four oh two. Four E.
Room is clearing out for executive session.